Board meeting of the Jefferson Elementary School District, April 22nd, 2015 at 7:06. And can we have members present?
Joseph Otidey, Marie Brizuela.
Here.
Manufo Leah Iga Anawahi.
Here.
Rebecca Douglas.
Here.
Shaquille Ali.
Here.
Hello, Jefferson Elementary School District Board members and audience. We are from Westlake School and we will be leading the pledge.
Please stand. Prepare to salute the flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thanks.
Extremely well done.
And can we have the motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second motion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Special presentation, Soul Shop at Westlake Elementary School. Ms. Annabelle Kloseman, the principal from Westlake School, will present Soul Shop, an anti-bullying and positive self-esteem program that has been recently implemented at the school. And she will share information about this program at the school.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm the principal of Westlake Elementary and I have my fabulous students behind me. They will actually be doing some of the presentation, but before I give the mic over to them, I'd like to just share a little bit about the program. First of all, we know that for kids to have really deep, powerful learning, they need to be emotionally connected and they need to feel safe. And so, this program, I feel, is helping us to provide a fun, safe, valued, where kids feel valued and connected. So we're working on creating a peaceful, powerful learning culture. And can you please tell me which one to brush here? Right, thank you. It does this by emphasizing empathy in children, honesty and integrity. They come in and they do a staff in service. There are a lot of character workshops that can be tailored fit to the classroom. There are specialized sessions, a team-building day. So for instance, if there's a particular need that a class has, they can come in and tailor-fit it to the needs of the teacher in the class. There are different whole-school assemblies and also just grade-level assemblies. How to be an ally to another child being bullied, or how to be free just to be and have a great time at school. There's tools of the heart, where we talk about really sharing your feelings and just learning how to stop and breathe when you're getting upset or there's a problem coming up. So it's trying to teach kids how to really slow down. The parent classes that we've had, we've done this for two years, parents have raved about it because they talk about the brain, the development of the child's brain and how their actions really are developmental and why it is that they do what they do. And also, it teaches them the tools to use at home so you're not getting into a lot of conflict. It's still there, but it's a more productive conflict. The students also learn to be peace managers out on the yard. So they learn all of the tools in the schools and the tools needed to mediate conflicts. And they also learn the tools, which teachers, you'll see us all carrying these little cards and there's a conflict instead of when kids come up and say, oh, something, we just, do you need to give an i-message? And then they do a cleanup. So we're encouraging kids to speak to each other. And what's great is I think that it pulls the whole community together in using a common language. So, teachers are using this, students are using this, and we're hoping that we can, you know, have it seep out to the families as well. So, the students will share about the balloon. It's a place where we keep all of our bad feelings and memories and how it starts to leak and what happens when it starts to leak. It turns out that it's teasing or hitting. And all these bad feelings go round and round. So we talk about how to get our feelings out in a healthier way. Sharing them, asking for what you need, drawing about it if you're a younger child. You can also get out your feelings by exercising, listening to music, dancing. These are all healthier ways of expressing your feelings. And feelings are not good or bad. They just are, we carrying them with us. We just need to be more aware of them. The students will all show, do a little skip for you on how to do an i-message. And they will do that. The second one there, it says, "We try not to say we don't like it when you do this." Because then what happens is the kids get defensive with each other. So we try, this is something we're practicing, how not to use the "you." We can use the "you" at the end when we're asking them for what it is that we need. And then there's the cleanup, which is hard. No one ever likes to admit that they're wrong. It's very, very difficult for all of us. But we say, you know, "I know that I pushed you or whatever. I apologize. What can I do to make it right? Next time I will, and will you forgive me?" And we try and keep that door open. A lot of times, it's, there's a lot of emotion and the kids, you know, you're really mad, you don't want to forgive. So we don't want to tell kids, say you're sorry. So we tell the kids, you know, "If you're not feeling like you can forgive, then just keep the door open and say, you know, 'Can I get back to you? I'm feeling really upset.' So, don't say no." So we encourage the forgiveness so that we're not carrying around that hurt all the time. And then, one of the students will also talk about the F-R-E-E, how to be free. Flow, don't let it bother you. Someone says, "Oh, that's an ugly necklace." Look out and say, "I know," and you walk away. All of a sudden, it's like it takes the person off-guard. Or, "Thank you." If they give you a bad comp, "Thank you" and walk away. So that person that's bullying or that has that leaky balloon is not getting to you. And they walk away thinking, "Oh, I didn't get to them." If it gets really bad, we say, "You know what? You need to get safe. Go out, leave, stand by another group, stand by an adult. Go play with someone else." Another thing they're being taught to do is speak up for yourself. Stand your ground and say, "I need respect. Leave me alone." And last, if those three don't work, get help. It's enough. Okay, and it's not tattling when you go get help, it's reporting, okay, about a situation. So these are some of the strategies that the students now will get up and share with you.
Alright, great.
Hello, my name is Bala Luen and I'm the sixth-grade student council president.
Hi, I'm Abel Benavides and I am in sixth grade.
Hi, my name is Sharon Liang and I'm in fifth grade.
We enjoy doing Soul Shop because they taught us about our feelings and where the bad feelings go. They taught us that our bad feelings go right into our gut and they make us feel bad. They go right here. So picture a balloon where all your feelings go. If it gets really full, then we might act in a mean way towards another person, hit or do or say other unkind things. Now remember, these feelings aren't bad, they're normal. When kids bully, they are really emptying the bad feelings in their balloon in a negative way. We can let out our feelings in a healthy way. We learned that we can exercise, draw, dance, do sports and listen to music. These are all healthy ways of emptying your balloon of bad feelings. So when students behave badly, they are hurting inside because their balloon is full. If we know this, we can have better conversations about our feelings and our school will be safe and supportive. Thank you.
Alright, thanks.
I learned that when your balloon leaks all over someone, it can be bullying. Your bad feelings go right here. If you start bothering, hitting or saying bad things to other kids, then it's your balloon leaking in an unhealthy way. You take all your hurt feelings and then make someone else feel bad. If it's really full and about to explode, then you might do something really bad. When I see a person behaving badly, I now understand that their balloon is full and I might try to talk to them or include them in a game. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Leila and I'm from, I'm in sixth grade.
Hi, my name is Margaret Victor and I am in fourth grade.
Hi, my name is Javon Benton and I'm in fifth grade.
I have learned a lot from Soul Shop. One tool I learned how, is how to give an i-message. An i-message is a way to tell how, a person how you feel or ask for what you need. It has four steps. We will now demonstrate the four steps of the i-message.
The first and second step, tell how you feel.
I feel mad when people talk behind my back.
The third step, ask for what you need, but remember not to say "you" because we don't want to blame the person and then they become defensive.
I need respect by not talking behind my back.
The fourth step, you can now say "you" and ask them to stop doing what they were doing.
Will you please give me respect by not talking behind my back?
It's hard, but it's important to always look the person in the eye when you are giving your message. Now you will hear Margaret doing a cleanup to the problem.
I know that I talk behind your back. I apologize. What can I do to make it right?
You can give me respect by not talking behind my back.
Next time I will not talk behind your back. Will you forgive me?
Yes.
My name is Kirsten Elkenter from Westlake Elementary School. I'm fourth grade and I'm here to tell that there are four different ways to help stand up for yourself. It is called free. Means flow, radar, express and enough. Let's start with flow. Flow means, don't let it bother you. It means, you have to like, don't, if someone bullied you, just let them, like, leave them alone. Like, flow means, don't let it bother you. Here are some few words that can help you. There are okay, thank you and I know. If someone told you something like, "Your clothes look weird," just say, "Thank you." You can even put them all together. Like, okay, thank you, I know. The second strategy is called radar. Means, get safe. If you feel uncomfortable in what place you're in, leave or stand by an adult. The third way is called express. Means, speak up. If someone is bothering you, just say, "I need respect. Leave me alone." Or, "I need some space." Just speak up. The final strategy is called enough. Means, get help. If you tried the first, second and third strategies and it didn't work, go to an adult, tell them it didn't work and you need some help.
Now Mia and Javon will perform a skit and demonstrate another i-message and cleanup. I feel hurt and excluded when people don't include or pass the ball to me in basketball. I need people to pass the ball more often when I'm open. Will you include me in the basketball game and pass the ball when you see that I'm open?
I know, I know that I didn't include you in the game and pass the ball when you were open. I apologize, it wasn't my intention to be mean. What can I do to make it right?
If I'm open, notice me and pass the ball.
Next time I will do a better job of noticing you, noticing when you are open and pass the ball to you. Will you forgive me?
I'm not sure, I'm feeling pretty upset right now. Let's talk later. Later, I would go back up to my friend and open the conversation up again if I was feeling better and could accept his apology. Thank you.
Very good.
So, in the heat of the moment, it doesn't look like this. They're pretty upset, but the scenarios were some that did occur on the playground, but it didn't occur with these children. But, any questions?
I don't have any questions, but it seems like that's just a really good strategy for everybody to know, at whatever age. You know, and stopping and thinking before you speak is probably the only thing I would add to it.
Yeah. And we find that students, a lot of times, they just say, "I'm sad and I'm mad." But there are a lot of other feelings. "I'm feeling left out." "I'm feeling really hurt," or "I'm feeling scared" because when you started yelling at me, it reminded me of my father yelling me at home. So there's a lot of emotions that come up. And I think when students see each other's vulnerability, they have more empathy for each other. And they, sometimes they both end up walking away crying but feeling good about the situation. So there are a lot of good things come about when kids can talk about their feelings. It is a process, it takes time on the playground, but we're all working at it.
Sounds like a great program.
It is. And, yeah.
I want to thank the children for coming this evening and sharing all sound like you really believe in this and you're doing a great job. So hopefully it'll spread around and everybody will feel the same way.
Oh, I did want to ask about the T-shirts. I see some of the kids are wearing their Playworks Junior Coaches. That part of the Soul Shop is, is that the junior coaches that have learned on the playground how to help other children?
We do Playworks. And so, these are some of the junior coaches as well.
So that's another program also helping with?
And we're doing Positive Behavior Intervention Systems. So all three programs really blend nicely together. They, the Playworks, they use the Soul Shop strategies, the i-message, the cleanup, a little bit of restorative justice because our Playworks coach, Wayne, that you met, I think, a couple of weeks ago, has been trained with that as well. So we, kind of, they all blend together very nicely.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
So they did a wonderful job and I'm very glad to see what type of positive behavior interventions we have at the school. And this is also a lesson for the other schools in the district. And I really liked that you have the restorative justice piece at the end, the cleanup. That's very important and that's the direction that the district wants to go in. And we have certificates for all those leaders down there.
Thank you for coming and presenting. Leila? And Sharon? Javon Benton? Leila? And last one is Kirsten Elkenter.
Abel Benavides. And Bala Luen. Alright, thanks once again for your work at your school and presenting tonight.
And thanks to all the parents for bringing them out tonight.
And, we don't have, oh, here it comes. Yes.
Yes, they are, they are free to go.
Homework.
Dismissed. And we have a speaker card from Melinda Dart, AFT.
Thank you, Melinda Dart, AFT, 3267. I'd like to congratulate the Westlake students for such a great job tonight, presenting Soul Shop. Good job. And I wanted to report that we had a very successful family workshop the other night at Fernando on civic-mindedness, which was well-attended. And we look forward to working together with the district next year to provide more family workshops at night at the schools. We did want to say tonight that in this time of negotiations, we just want to remind the school board that we hope that we can support all employees at this time. We hope we can support the young who have such a difficult time affording rents in our area. And so many teachers are leaving this year. You may have noticed, we have a lot of teachers leaving the area. We hope we can support the older employees who may not be able to afford to retire yet and need to keep working. We hope we can support the preschool teachers who need room to go in their salary schedule. And we hope we can support the ACES employees who have extra duties and have to now write newsletters and find that they have extra money for supplies in their budget but have had no increase in eight years in their salary, in their hourly increase. We hope we can support the classified, who, some of whom work simply for health insurance, right? And have less hours and live in this expensive area with all of us. We just came back from Sacramento where we lobbied on behalf of community schools, which would be such a great boon to our district. We have added so many wonderful positions, including administrative positions recently to our district. And these things will make schools better across the district. But let's not forget that you have the employees here that have been here through all these years of furlough days. And those employees we have here who have worked all this time need to feel support. Just want to leave that with you.
Alright, thanks. Administrator comments.
Sorry. Oh, I just want to thank Westlake School and the students and the staff for sharing Soul Shop. That's a program several schools have been using and that is something that we're proposing in the LCAP for all of our elementary schools for next year. So you'll see that when that comes forward. And then also, this, tomorrow night, there is a parent night and staff can attend as well. It's Joe Bowler is kind of renowned in the field of mathematics from Stanford and she's going to be at Westmore High School tomorrow at 6 o'clock till 7:30. And the title of the workshop is "How Parents Can Help Their Children Learn and Love Math." So we encourage everyone to attend. She's a great speaker and really engaging. So, we hope to see a lot of folks there.
I just want to say that I think it's wonderful, this whole kind of conflict resolution and trying to get in touch with your feelings and to understand the feelings of others. And to try to convey that, those feelings to each other in a productive way rather than fighting because it's come a long way since I was their age.
That's good, right?
I'd also like to thank the students from Westlake for that great presentation. The board members would have received in their packets the Personnel Commission budget for our next school year. And there will be a public hearing on May 5th at the Personnel Commission meeting. If you want to attend that meeting, that would be great. But if you can't and you have any questions or input, please contact Mr. Vidalis.
Board member acknowledgements and commendations.
I don't have so much an acknowledgement as a public service announcement. I just want to remind people and encourage people to attend on May 2nd and 3rd the Daily City Public Library Associates Book Sale. They have tons of books, children's books, really cheap. So you can pile up the books to help those kids with their reading. Get a pile of them for, prepared for summer vacation. So that's, again, May 2nd and 3rd. It's at the 280 Coma Centers. I think the store number is 50, it's right next to Old Navy. And from 10 a.m. to 5 p.m., is that right?
I think so.
I think that's correct. I should know, I'm supposed to be there. Come at noon and you're safe. And we will be displaying all the art that the children turned in on the My Library Is poster contest, including the winners of that. So lots of adorable library art from our, our children from our district and our city.
I don't have any announcements, but I'm excited to hear, excuse me, that Soul Shop is going to be offered at all of our schools. I think it's very important, it's a great program. I think not just the children benefit from it, but it's long-lasting for all of us as adults as well. And I think, I think it's wonderful. I'm excited about Playworks too, seeing that being expanded in all of our schools as well. I've seen them in action and it's just an incredible program. So, I'm just excited that our schools are able to have these programs offered.
Ms. Brizuela?
Well, I just wanted to say I very much wanted to attend this Civil-Mindedness program. And also, I had looked forward to going to Sacramento, but unfortunately, my husband had hip replacement surgery and kind of needed me there all the time, you know? Still going back and forth, he's in rehab now. But somehow, I was, I managed to squeeze in a few things here that I did. And I'm not sure if the last meeting I mentioned it, but I wanted to thank Garden Village and Pauline Brown and Tobias School that all, they received flyers about the Easter egg hunt in Broadmoor. And they had a little, small picture of a bunny rabbit and if they colored it, it wasn't a contest, but they could turn it in and get a little prize. And so they all got these little duckies and they were so happy to get this little ducky. And everybody was equal and that was great. So, they had a great time, so, don't think I mentioned it last time. But, and then I did attend today, Thomas Citizen. They're preparing for their opera. And, children are wonderful, they're just great. And they had two classes that I was able to sit with them and I'm helping them out with some of their costumes. So that's a lot of fun for me, I love doing that. And also, the, they're going to do it also on Friday, so I'll be there on Friday. And, what else was there? Something else I know I went to, what was it? Oh, that, we had the council tea, the Jefferson Council Honorary Service Award Tea, which was well-attended and a lot of fun, a lot of food. And hope that next year, more people will come. And as a reminder to all the schools, if a principal or a teacher's here, remind, or PT president, remind them to be sure to put the names in so we know who to invite. Especially the ones that are just getting their awards now. Literacy Day was absolutely fantastic. I think they had, gosh, I think over 2,000 people there or something? No, no, I mean, they, yeah, they went through those lunches and stuff. It was a lot of people, a lot of children having a lot of good, a lot of fun, learning a lot, and it was just an exciting day. So I wanted to thank everyone who was involved with that. And, I think that's it, I'm not sure. Oh, we had a subcommittee meeting with the City of Daily City, which went very well. And they basically were talking about what we were doing with Thomas, Daniel Webster School, the property that was surplus. And as some of you remember, we discussed it at a previous meeting that we, right now, do not feel we want to do anything with that property because it's not really designed, that spot, to work well with our elementary school there. So it was really good because I think the city understood that and we were all on the same page, which was really great. So, and I know that Shaquille was with me and I thought we had a good meeting.
Yes.
Okay, and that's it.
Alright. Correspondents?
Yeah, just a couple of items. So I wanted to let the board know and the public know as well that Susan B. Anthony is having their annual art gallery event. It's happening this Friday. I believe it's happening all day. Stop by the office, get a visitor badge and you may, they may, they may have some student docents that may be walking around. If not a student, then perhaps an adult, like Ms. Burke. She likes to show off her students' artwork. I didn't, I said she likes to show off her students' artwork, not that she likes to show off. So those of you who chuckled, it was a full sentence. So those, those of you who chuckled, it was a full sentence.
It was just slow coming.
Bernie, what time was that?
I believe it's all day. Teachers here from SBA, do you guys have specific times on that? Is that 9 o'clock, 9 to 2, Mr. Felix? Yeah? Yes. Show up at noon probably is a good idea. It'll be open. I also wanted to share, and perhaps even some of the students from Westlake who were here, they've been participating in the Khan Academy program and they were recognized as being top performers in the, in the program. They just recently got notified that they, that they're being invited to a Learn Storm, where they're gonna, they're invited to go to the Google campus and engage in lots of fun activities. And so congratulations to Westlake and the students who are participating in this program.
Great.
And are those your comments?
Those are my comments, too.
All right. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion we approve the consent agenda?
All those in favor, actually, this is a roll call.
Roll call. Yeah. Mrs. Brizwella?
Aye.
Mrs. Lia Ina Anawai?
Aye.
Dr. Douglas?
Aye.
Mr. Ali?
Aye.
Item number four, under General Functions Governance Handbook 2015 Updates. The administration recommends that the board review and adopt the Jefferson Elementary School District Governance Handbook 2015. Update discussed and developed with the assistance from the California School Boards Association at a governance leadership workshop on March 7th, 2015. The new revised or updated information is highlighted.
So it is, as an attachment to your agenda, what I remember, and perhaps the board can, can remember also, is that we discussed that we would approve this when all board members were present. If I'm not correct, so I believe.
That is correct.
Sometimes Mr. Tidy shows up quietly behind me and I don't know if he's here, but I believe, yeah, we're missing one, one board member, so I would request that we table this into our future, to a future meeting.
Okay.
I would totally agree, I was going to say that, actually.
All right, do we need a motion to table?
Oh, make a motion we table this until all members are present.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, table.
I'm going to take it out so it's safe. Maria, take the end of the copy.
Until all members present.
Okay. Or should I leave it in? Should I leave it in?
Curriculum and Instruction, Pupil Personnel Services, Acceptance of Donations. Would anyone like to have the honors?
Sure, I would love to have the honor. So I will move that we accept with thanks the following donations. $50 from Mr. Dave Jones at Target, for M.H. Tobias School for an iPad, and 245, 242 packs of seeds from Slope Gardening Center for their gardening program. That appears to be at this time, so.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to comment on something about donations, if I may, at this time, since it's donations. I noticed on this one, it did say about packages of seeds or something here. We did have a, an individual who donated books to one of the programs that we had where the teachers came and the parents came to learn things and we all gathered together. And they would like, you know, we would like to send a letter to thank that person for donating it. But when I inquired, I was told that if it wasn't a dollar amount, they, it couldn't be done. But I think that anytime someone's going to give you, I think it was 250 books or something, I forget what it was, it was a huge amount of books, to our children that attend that workshop, should be acknowledged. So I would like to ask that that be done, please.
If I can get the name and the items, that'd be great.
Thank you. I'll get that to you.
Because we do want people to know we appreciate all donations, large and small.
And you know what? If we can get more, they'll come back. You thank, if you thank somebody, they'll come back.
That's true.
Do it again.
All right. Item number three, Curriculum and Technology Integration Updates. Yes. Tony Barone, Technology and Curriculum Integration Director, will provide a progress update to the board and public on the current JESD Classroom Technology Plan and Plans for the 2015-16 school year.
Well, thank you. I'm happy to be here tonight to talk about current state of the technology department and talk about our immediate next steps for the rest of the school year and for the 2015-16 school year. And then welcome any questions you have at the end in terms of the direction and in terms of where we're going. Last year, the superintendent appointed a committee, the Common Core Implementation Advisory Committee. And they did a tremendous amount of work in researching best practices and integrating technology in the schools and put together a very thoughtful plan for how to roll out technology in light of the Common Core and Sback and what the needs would be for the students in terms of having the technology to meet the needs of the new Common Core state standards and the new testing. I just want to give you an update on where we are right now in terms of what that plan had outlined. The plan had called for in 2014-15 this year, that every second through eighth grade classroom would receive five Chromebooks, and these have been implemented since the start of the school year. Every school would receive one to two Chromebook carts, and that was just depending on the size of the school in general. Most schools received one cart, the larger schools received two carts where they could provide whole class instruction with the Chromebook carts. With the five Chromebooks designed to be used during universal access time and to be readily available throughout the day for students to access. The plan also called for every teacher to have a laptop for many reasons, to increase their productivity and also really provides us much more opportunities for professional development where teachers now have mobile devices they can bring to meetings and trainings and not be tied to a particular desk. So those three things all happened this year. The plan also suggested that we do more research into the appropriate devices for the primary grades, TK, pre-K, K and first. And so actually, my first couple of weeks here in February, I was able to join the ELA Department when they had scheduled trainings with those grade levels. And the teachers all went through a workshop where they were able to experience Chromebooks and iPads and they, they were doing activities that you would do in a kinder or a first grade classroom. And then they were able to provide a recommendation of what they felt might be most appropriate for their classes. Almost 90% of the teachers thought the iPad was more appropriate for those primary grade classrooms, so we are going to move forward and bring iPads into all of those classrooms next year.
Yeah.
One of the other things that the plan called for research was the appropriate tools for the SDC and RSP classrooms. So in working with the special ed department, we also decided to put iPads in the SDC classrooms just because of the nature of the accessibility features and the apps that we really felt like that was the appropriate tool for the SDC classrooms. And then RSP was a bit trickier because they serve so many kids in a wide variety of capacities. So we sort of, we crossed both and we're providing two iPads and two Chromebooks in those classes because we do have upper grade kids who may need the practice with the Chromebook. And there are also younger students who are in RSP as well. So we're going to try and do two iPads and two Chromebooks and see how that goes next year and evaluate as the program continues. So that's just sort of the current state of what the plan had called for in terms of classroom technology. Behind the scenes, lots of things that people don't really see, but certainly make a difference in the overall implementation. We are currently undergoing a full upgrade of the network infrastructure. So all of the schools, including maintenance, preschool, district office, are receiving a complete upgrade. I mean, literally all the wiring, there's access points in every classroom. The schools have been very patient with this process. Originally, we were slated to wait until summer to do all this work, but realizing the current state of the bandwidth and the needs for the Sback testing, we decided to do it on a revolving plan where every week we upgrade a different school. And so the principals have been very cooperative in planning their testing schedules around when this work is being done, so we can accommodate that. And we're about 80% there, so we just have a couple more schools to go and we should be done by the end of the month. It also increased our bandwidth. And the biggest thing we also did is it was scaled for growth. So as more technology comes to the classrooms, we can easily scale the amount of bandwidth we have without having to go through this work again. So we have that capability to grow for the next several years. I think one of the most important features of the plan last year, and I was so happy, that was my first question on my first day, that this is actually happening, there is a reserve fund for the classroom technology. So often in school districts, when large amounts of money come in, like with Common Core and a lot of technology is purchased, you don't think about five or six years down the road when all that needs to be replaced and then those funds may or may not be there. And so there is a reserve fund in place so that in five or six years, when this equipment becomes obsolete, thank you Julie, we'll have the money to continue to replenish and always have fresh equipment in the schools. So all of this was part of the plan and that's sort of the state of where we currently are with those points. What's on the horizon for next year? The department is going to grow.
Yes.
We are currently an information technology department and we have, we have an IT manager, we have an SAS specialist, we have three computer technicians. And then at every site, we have what we call a site technology resource teacher, and those are classroom teachers who receive a stipend to be sort of that first line of support at your school if, you know, something's not printing or you don't know why something's working. And it's nice to have someone on your site. And then they choose whether it needs to get escalated to a computer technician. We are going to grow the second part of our IT squared in our instructional technology, where we are in the process of hiring district technology integration specialists, whose focus will be on working directly with teachers to provide not only professional development, but that one-on-one support in the classroom to help teachers with the implementation of technology in the curriculum. The sites also have what we call a site technology integration resource teacher. And again, these are classroom teachers who have an adjunct responsibility and they're sort of the go-to teacher on site for, hey, I've got an idea, I'm not too sure what to do with it, can you help me integrate something in my, in my classroom? So we are working on growing that right side of the umbrella. We are exploring different options for professional learning next year. On August 17th, that's the first day back for teachers, there will be an institute day that will be devoted to technology integration and PBIS. And when it often looks like, why are we putting these two things together? I pull it back into this theme of learning reimagined. And it's a work that, it's work that's been done for the last couple of years. A group of educators have traveled around the world looking at how is teaching and learning changed in light of being in a connected society? You know, yes, tech, technology makes a difference, but how do students interact with each other? How do you learn? What are different ways teachers can teach? And in this book, it has all of these threads of how RTI is included in that, PBIS, as well as how technology is used. So this is our theme for our day in August. We also heard loud and clear during the LCAP meetings that teachers want the PD, but they're at varying levels. So we decided to do it as a conference style, so we'll have different options. Teachers will be able to select which sessions they attend and really create their own day based on where they are. You know, we have teachers who are well on their way, they've been to many conferences, they're integrating a lot of technology, and we also have teachers who are brand new in the process and need that support. So we're offering this different kind of professional learning, really in the hopes of meeting everybody where they are and moving everybody forward.
Mm-hmm.
In terms of other professional learning for the year, we are going to integrate the technology training in all of the ELA, ELD trainings for next year. So we're going to try to not have as many standalone technology trainings and really deliver it with the content area trainings. So all of that will be integrated with ELA and ELD next year. We are going to develop some cohorts of teachers who do want to dive in deeper and create a series of professional learning for them where they can work as a cohort to really develop their skills and start to work on some, building some units of study around integrated curriculum. We're going to work very hard to tie all of the professional learning to deployment. So as the technology is coming to teachers, that there will be professional learning provided for them there, right then and there. And the big piece is really to build capacity for professional learning. One of the things I'm most excited about with the conference is how many of our own teachers will be presenting during that day. And I want to continue to foster that so we can have more teachers as leaders in that work as we move forward.
Great.
So next steps. All of these devices need management systems. And so one of the main things the tech office will be working on this spring and summer is developing systems to deploy those in a more seamless way so we can make it less work for the teacher. I believe teachers should be teachers, not technicians. And so we're trying to make ways to deploy apps and manage issues as they come up as seamlessly as we can so the teachers won't feel like they're at the brunt of having to download apps and do all kinds of work on that end. So we're setting that up. On the instructional side, we're also going to look at ways to provide and deploy instructional materials as well. So creating like a website of resources where teachers can go and have resource materials readily available. We're going to continue to monitor the bandwidth needs. Again, it seems like it's great now, but we're adding 600 devices this summer, so we're going to continue to monitor that and make sure that we have the capacity to support all of those devices. This was another item from the plan last year, is to look at developing a technology skill, so scope and sequence, so teachers have an idea of what expectations could be at every grade level for students. Also looking at how do we assess effective instructional practices? So working with the administrative team of, you know, what does good instructional technology look like? So as they're in classrooms, as we're all in classrooms, we have good ideas of what they could be looking for in terms of expectations. One other thing I'm going to recommend is next year is to develop a five-year strategic plan. The plan that was developed last year really sort of ends right now with the work that we've done. And, you know, I know technology changes all the time, but I think really having something that will drive our direction of where we want to go, I think will be important. So I'd like to focus sometime next year really developing what that plan might look Questions? Comments?
We'll start from Ms. Douglas.
Well, I have to say, I'm really impressed, this is looking good.
Yeah.
I, I, some of the concerns that I have about technology deployment have been answered here, like the amount of support for teachers. And I love your conference where you can meet everybody where they're, they're at, so we don't feel like we're trying to make everybody fit the same mold on that, because we know that our teachers are in all sorts of different places with regard to that. It sounds like they're doing some real thought about what, like with the technology for the kindergartners, part of me does wonder whether that's even appropriate for kindergartners. I'm hoping that the research is being done to see if, if that's really what we should be doing.
Yeah.
So, that's just, just raising one of my little questions or issues is, you know.
Yeah, there's actually a great study I can share with you. They've done a lot of work developmentally where they equate the work that kids do with like their finger on a tablet with finger painting in developmental kindergarten as just another way of expression of using that free form, not always having to be pen and pencil.
Uh-huh.
And that you, there are apps that allow students to really do that, basically finger paint. And they're, you know, drawing a response or writing it out without having it be more of a like formal typing kind of activity.
Well, that's a lot easier to clean up after than real.
And it is, it's not messy, yeah.
Have to get the texture part on the screen there.
Yeah.
See, there's got to be something missing from the tactile part of.
Right, right, right.
Gooey finger paint stuff, because that was the best.
It was my favorite thing to do in kindergarten, yes.
Yeah, I think it's, excuse me, I, I don't have a question, but just, I think it's wonderful to see what has been implemented right now into the schools and the expansion of the program. I love hearing about the reserve funding, because I think it's so important, because sometimes we see a program thrive and then we're stand, we're at a standstill because we cannot move forward because, like you said, we'll be stuck with equipment that's obsolete. So I love that that has been thought through and that it's in place. Last week I had gone, that's why I missed that wonderful event that was mentioned by Melinda, Cultivating Families, because I wanted to be there, but I was able to attend a field trip with my daughter who, at Twitter, who's a club member for Girls Who Code.
Oh, right.
And I had mentioned this to our superintendent before, how wonderful it would be to have here, and what they said, the difficulty of implementing these programs, and people think it's a great program, but why they don't see it in other schools is because schools don't have the capacity for it. Meaning not just the volunteerism, but the equipment.
Right.
So it's great to see that we have these things in place because we can bring programs such as these now in. So I, I'm just excited to see this grow in our schools because the, the collaboration is now available and can be a reality. So thank you for your hard work and everyone that's involved, because it's very important that we acclimate, even our kindergartners.
Yeah.
I love to unplug my kids, I think it's important. But I think it's important, too, that even at that young age. But I think it's important too that even at that young age, that you know how to access and be very familiar with it. So that you can be up to par with what's going on around us. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. You know, and there was a lot of discussion during those K-1 meetings of, should we get Chromebooks in K-1 because there's Chromebooks in the upper grades? And I'm actually really happy with the way it turned out because I think as much exposure we can give to kids on a variety of tools, the better we can equip them for the future because we don't really know what they're going to have in a few years. And I think having that experience will be really positive for them.
That's true.
I want that finger painting app.
Well, I'm glad to see that the program is growing as well because there are so many other schools that have something for each child. And I think, you know, that's what's really, should be a goal eventually, that every child will be able to have it consistently rather than wait for my turn. But to see it growing as, this far now is, is a whole lot better than it was before. So we're, we're, we're making big steps and we, someday we'll be proud to say we could have everybody have it. And I do know that things change so much that what we're getting now is going to be probably outdated before we know it. And we have to keep up with the, the technology. Of course, I have to personally keep up with it, which I don't, but anyway, maybe I can go into one of the classrooms and one of the children will teach me. But a lot of the children are really already advanced on all this stuff. And they're, it's nice that they can now do it with their, their classes in school. And so I'm excited about this going on. And thank God we have the money and resources. And now the department is growing, so we have the personnel to do it. Because at one time, well, we had one person trying to run the whole thing, or a guy. But now we have more.
Last year.
Yeah, I know, I know. But I mean, he tried to hold the whole thing together for us and I appreciate all that he did. And, and now we have all this more. So this is great, this is great. So we'll keep us updated on all the things that are going on because it sounds exciting and it makes us feel that we're doing all we can for our students.
I have one small question. So of course, everything they said, I, I support. This has been a long time, well, not a long time, but a three-year dream that I had that we would be having a presentation like this tonight. But there was one small question I have, which was about support for the webmasters at the different schools. Because I know there was no, like some schools don't have anyone.
Right.
You know, they just have a teacher who will step in and do something here and there. So what's going on with that?
It's on the list, it's, that's, no, it is a concern, you're right. You know, some schools, the principal does it, some schools have a teacher who do it. So it's not consistent and they're really not as timely as they could be. You know, even with the district website, you know, we try to put things out.
Right.
So that's definitely a goal we're going to work on. We may actually even move to a tool that's just easier to use as well and a bit more accessible than the current tool. We decided to table that conversation for next year in light of other things that were going on because that is a job to re-update all the websites. But it is definitely something we need to, to consider, how we do it in a more organized and formal way so that all of them are more updated.
Alright, so I'm glad to know it's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda, it definitely is on the agenda.
Alright. So there's no other questions? Well, there's, we're not voting on anything. Well, thanks for that presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Business, a lot of business is already done. Alright, business item number four, new classroom furniture for Woodrow Wilson and TR Polisita. The administration recommends the governing board approve the purchase of new classroom furniture for Woodrow Wilson and TR Polisita partial schools. The estimated cost is $256,000. This purchase will be funded by the general fund and is part of the student furniture replacement plan for the district. And, does anyone want to talk about?
No, I'm glad to hear that we're going to be replacing because some of the furniture is seeing its last day. But the one question I had was, do we have funds in the general fund? Because it says it's the replacement plan for the district. How many other schools will be upgraded and if so, when?
So, we're not doing all the schools at one time.
I figured that.
How, if you're curious how we selected these two schools, TR Polisita's only a partial replacement, only the furniture that goes into the new, the new buildings. And Woodrow Wilson is being painted this summer, so all of their furniture has to be moved out of the room anyway. So that's, we figured we would just move new student furniture in. And this is being built into our, our budget over the next three to four years so that all schools get access to that. Schools who have broken furniture, we have a warehouse where we have replacement furniture for them. And then also the, the usable furniture from both TR Polisita and Woodrow Wilson is available for schools not getting replaced to request if they have something that's broken or unusable. So we figure over a period of five years, four to, three to five years, we haven't exactly figured it out down to the school every year, but we'll get all schools taken care of with new furniture. And in the meantime, the usable, good-conditioned furniture is available.
Alright, thanks for asking that question, that was a good question.
So I'll make a motion that, listen, if you have something to say. I'll make a motion that we approve the new classroom furniture for Woodrow Wilson and TR Polisita in the amount of $256,000.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations. Alright, certificated personnel administrative appointment.
Will you allow me to do that, Mr. Lee? So I would like to recommend, my recommendation to the board for the appointment of Mr. Brent Valenti to serve as the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, effective July 1st, 2015. He endured a rigorous process, a selection process, multi-month selection process, and he survived.
I'm glad.
And he did not get voted off the island. And so we, I'm recommending to the board that you appoint him beginning July 1st, so.
Alright.
Well, we'll have a discussion, I mean, I'll let me make a motion? Okay, I'd like to make the motion in case anybody wants to discuss it, the candidate or vote. I recommend that we make an appointment, administrative appointment for Brent Marquez Valente as a superintendent, Assistant Superintendent.
I thought you were voting me off of a job.
Blah, blah, blah. Effective July the 1st, 2015, on step three, at $140,170 plus $1,100 for an MA degree. With much, much pleasure.
And in spite of the fact that I think that he's an absolutely wonderful principal, I heartily agree and I will second that.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Congratulations.
So can't put everything I want to say into the motion, so I'll say it now. Brent, thank you for taking an interest in doing this job. I've known you for an awful long time in the district, not awful, nice long time. I meant to say a long time, in the district. And whatever job you've taken, you've, you've done it to above and beyond. And I want to thank you for how you took care of Polisita School and really brought it up to something that we can be proud of. And I know they're going to miss you, but we get to use you in another way in the district. And I know you're going to do a great job and thank you so much for all that you do for the district.
We look forward to working with you.
And Mr. Valenti, do you have a few words for the board? Please come forward, yeah. I did emphasize few, Mr. Valenti.
Not the first time either, yeah. No, I just want to say I'm really looking forward to working with everybody in this different capacity, you know. I've been at schools for 20 years, my entire professional life, part of that I was in restaurants, so. It's going to be a different experience, I'm really looking forward to learning the process and what goes on back in that door as well. And I know it's going to be successful, good times. So thank you all for your confidence and your trust and for putting up with me for those lovely four interviews. So those of you who are involved, thank you very much. And I still have six long weeks here to finish up TRP and make sure the transition goes well.
Six short weeks.
Short weeks. Sometimes it could be one long day though. So with that, that's my prerogative right now. And after July 1st, my 46th birthday, I will begin my new job.
Well, thanks, Mr. Valenti. I had the pleasure of working with Mr. Valenti when I was a substitute in the district at Polisita. And I did see, like Ms. Roswell has said, the, the change that Polisita went through with you there. So I really appreciate that and looking forward to working with you in this way now too.
Thank you, appreciate it very much, everybody.
Job description for school counselor, item number four. The administration recommends approval of the updated job description for school counselor. This position will be funded from supplemental and concentration grants. Fund designation is subject to approval of 2015-16 LCAP.
So we, included in the recommend, I'm sorry.
Alright, no, go ahead.
Included in the recommendations coming from all the meetings that have been around. And the board last week approved going forward with the idea of looking for counseling positions. So we are trying to get five additional counselors in the district to bring counselors to our elementary schools. And there currently, we only have middle school counselors and they were hired on a job description that's specific for middle school counselors and actually for a grant that we no longer have. So we really felt it needed to be updated to include both elementary and middle school principals. So right now it's a very, counselors, I'm sorry. It's a very competitive job market out there right now. We recently took part in a very big job fair at San Mateo County just last Friday. And by 10 o'clock, applications we had brought had disappeared. There were lots of districts attending and so we just really feel we need to move forward to try to grab people before they're gone.
Well, I think this is, obviously is a great idea. When I worked in San Francisco, the elementary schools didn't have counselors, some did, but some didn't. They had advisors. So I think this is a good move and whatever we can do to support it.
Well, if anybody's been around as long as I have, we used to have counselors. We had lots, we had nurses, we had lots of things. And it's really nice to be able to get back some of the things that really helped the children. So I'm pleased that we're going to, you know, get, get five at least, you know. Because some of our children need it. And parents as well, they need to have a resource for them. So, so we need to adopt the job description.
Yes, which I think does make sense.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, the job description makes sense too.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make the motion then that we approve the updated job description for school counselor. And it would include, it would designate both elementary and middle school. And what else? And that it be, what am I reading here?
I think that's sufficient.
Is that enough?
Yes.
Sorry.
I'll go ahead and second that. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to declare unanimous?
Unanimous. No opposed. Job description for lead physical education teacher. The administration recommends approval of the job description for lead physical education teacher district-wide. This position will be funded from supplemental and concentration grants. Fund designation is subject to approval of 2015-16 LCAP. Once again, this is something that was in high, well, a big request from the community in different ways. So I think this is a good first step towards answering some of those concerns that the, the community had about our sports programs.
So would this be for the PE programs, is that it?
Well, the plan would be to hire three PE teachers, the lead teacher. So we'd have them divided by, sort of like our regions that we have in the district now. And they would be overseeing, working with the PEAids, with classroom teachers, doing some PE teaching themselves in the classes and just really developing the program and the curriculum and helping in terms of inventory and equipment and bringing at least some coordination to after-school programs, possibly some intramural sports, so a little bit of everything.
Yeah, it sounds exciting.
Good.
Okay, okay, well, I would like to make a motion then that we approve the job description. Now, I'm going to get the, get all the words just right here. That we approve the job description for lead physical education teachers district-wide.
One second.
Now, before I vote, I'm going to ask the question. So we're just doing the job spec right now, but are we going to be voting on the salary on it?
They're on the teacher's salary schedule.
Oh, just like a regular teacher, you mean?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to check, because it said lead, so I didn't know if that meant there's more. So I just wanted to ask that question. Okay, thank you. So we can vote.
Was there a second?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Four member comments and reports.
Oh, no further comments?
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have.
No?
Lot of reports.
Sorry, yeah.
I know I'm not a board member, but I'm a governance team member. And I would, I would like to make a, a little comment. So today, you know, we've heard lots about the way that the district is using the additional funds provided by the state to improve our program. You've heard about technology, you've seen that we're reinstating counselors, we are bringing more support to the PE program. There's Soul Shop that we're rolling out. Soul Shop that's being rolled out across the district at our elementary sites. And, and a lot seems to be being done. To, for starters, we are not anywhere close where we should be. If we've been getting the cost of living adjustments since 2008. I think last time Ms. Kessler calculated, we would be at year 2010. So if we got in everything we were supposed to, and we were not, we were not very wealthy in 2008, if I can remember. That was my first year in the district. But we are selectively and strategically growing back. And, you know, just for the sake of the public, you've heard comments in the last couple of weeks about different things that employees are requesting. And, and I just need the public to understand and to know that, you know, the district has also supported our staff very generously. We've given about an equivalent of 13% raise in the last several years with salaries and benefits. There's more to come. So I don't want the public to turn off their TV to think that we're not doing anything and we're only rolling out programs without supporting our staff. And we are doing both and, and it is a very strategic and selective process that we do both.
Alright, thanks. Any comments or reports?
Well, I already gave the report unfortunately earlier because I didn't want to forget not to do it, sorry. But anyway, I, I just do want to say, I'll piggyback on the fact that we definitely do need to look at our salary package for everybody. Because I don't think that they'll be able to recoup what they've lost in so many years that we didn't get anything. But that's, I don't want to delve into it because it's negotiations. Someone will slap me on, slap me down and say, I shouldn't say that. But I do believe that we need to, to, to not forget that that needs to be done too, that's all. I know, well, I, I didn't comment.
We can't forget.
We don't comment after each other speaks. I just needed to say that. I just needed to say that.
And with that, we have no speaker cards. Well, actually, Ms. Dart spoke to the closed session items earlier.
Oh, she's over there?
Yeah, she spoke to that already.
This is last chance to speak.
No, I'm just stating the fact.
Which is surprise.
Just let you have time in your closed session, you know you can.
Okay.
Alright, Paul Hagan, teacher, AFT leadership.
Good evening, my name is Paul Hagan. I teach at Benjamin Franklin.
I teach at Benjamin Franklin Intermediate School. Been working in the district for 27, 28 years, maybe, quite a while. And I understand that you're going into closed session, and that item number one is negotiations on the AFT contract. I just have a short comment that I just wanted to make and share with you, just for consideration. And I understand that our district is working hard to be competitive and to stay competitive. We appreciate that there has been movement in improving our salaries and, excuse me, helping us cover our health costs. But I just wanted to share with you briefly, a short conversation I had with one of our first-year teachers very recently. Good teacher, really good teacher, the middle school, kids love him, working really, really hard. And I asked him how it went, you know, wrapping up his first year, how's it been, you know, and how's he feeling about the future? And he said, man, I love this job, I love teaching. I'm a local guy, told me, grew up in the Bay Area, in San Francisco, and he's, he's always dreamed and wanted to teach in the area, always wanted to live in the area where he grew up. And he told me, he said, you know, what really is hurting me right now is I feel that I'm not going to be able to fulfill my dream. I'm teaching, but I cannot foresee that I'm going to be able to live in the Bay Area on my salary. Now, I understand that we all struggle in the Bay Area, I mean, but he's going to, he already is accepting the fact that he's going to need to move on if he wants to buy a house, married. And I know that that, like I said, that's an issue in many professions for a lot of people in the Bay Area right now. But I got to tell you, it breaks my heart just to hear this from new teachers, first year. And we need these people to stay in our district. And I know that you can't fix everything, but anything that you can continue to do to help us, we definitely appreciate. Thank you very much for hearing me.
All right, thanks, Ms. Hagan.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak again. Melinda Dart, AFT 3267. Along that, on that theme, I've been hearing so much lately from not just teachers, but community members who, and in fact, at the Civic Mindfulness Workshop, we talked a lot about what is good about our community and what are the downsides, right? And people were telling me about their struggles over rent and housing. And I think that that is a huge problem that's only going to get worse in Daly City, as San Francisco, you know, where the greed runs rampant, and people are going to spill over here, and the prices are going to go up here. It's already happening, and I think we need to maybe brainstorm or think as a community, what can we do about housing? At one time, we had a school board member, Hans Hansen, who had a dream of affordable housing for teachers, utilizing some of our property. And, and we might need to think along those lines. We do have a lot of property, and this is not something that's simple to do, but they are doing it in San Francisco. And I think if we want to keep middle-income people in our area, we are going to have to think about how we can do that. And I also wanted to compliment the tech plan. It's wonderful to hear of some professional development coming up for teachers that has choice involved in it. I know teachers have long wanted a choice, and not to be treated all the same. We're all asked to differentiate for our students and do things differently for them, and yet we often sit all in a multi-use room and hear one lecture meant for all of us. So, we're really glad to hear that that's coming up. Thank you.
Before we go into closed session, I just want to say that my comment tonight was on the line of Mr. Vidalis's comments, so that's why I refrain from speaking. But I'm looking forward to us finding out where we are in the negotiations and us having a positive outcome. So, thanks for staying around tonight, and at this time, we will...
Close session. Close session.
Yeah, right here. So, we're going to, well, before we close, convene to closed session with the moment of silence in memory of John Jack Hayes, who worked in the district from 1977 to 1984, and served as both Director of Classified Personnel and Director of Certified Classified Personnel. All right. And we'll take a five-minute...